Welcome everyone, your consideration for approval of the minutes. Great, done, further discussion? None on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, carry, consent items, A, B, one, two, three, any questions? Noni, any further discussion? No questions? On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, carry. Uh, go down to number eleven, license and permits vending license, wagon license, the plaza Mexican building business in the bottom won't be open. Anyone here for that? Dave, come on up, welcome, how you doing?
Good, thank you.
Good.
Alright, uh, sorry, we arrived a little late here.
That's okay, that's okay.
Um, so as you guys know, we were here, um, last summer, you know, um, selling and whatnot. And we just like another opportunity to do something, you know, we feel like the, the people of St. James really liked it, so.
Those over here are caution of the VFW, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Same place as last year.
Yep, same place, yeah. So, uh, yeah, we're just here, you know, trying to get another opportunity to go at it again.
And what nights and what hours are you planning this year?
Uh, we're thinking maybe to start off just Saturdays.
Saturday only?
Saturday is the same times as usual, like from three-ish to around nine.
Three to nine PM?
Yeah.
Okay, one, one night a week?
Yeah, uh, ma- maybe if, if it's alright, just to have the option of coming on Friday as well. Um, but we're probably gonna be pretty busy, uh, so we're thinking at least just Saturday.
Start with Saturday, right, uh, same thing, three to nine?
Yeah, same thing.
And where you coming from?
Wellington.
Same as last year?
Yep.
And when you thinking of starting?
Hopefully this weekend if that's okay.
This weekend?
Yeah.
Uh, probably gonna be a couple of snow piles, you're not gonna be able to get.
Yeah, you know, we saw, we saw, you know, if the, if the weather allows it. I mean, you know, the sooner the better, to be honest.
Yeah, depends on what happens tomorrow night, but, well, do we have a lot of snow into there right here?
No.
Pretty clean up there. Alright, you're the same folks as last year?
Yeah, we're the exact same people, yeah.
Alright, for you, okay, same menu as you had last year?
Yeah, same exactly, same recipe, same everything, you know, people love it, so.
Your dad coming too?
Yeah.
And your mom?
No, just like that.
Yes, you did, okay. Alright, any other questions? Noni?
Second.
Don, any further discussion, anything you wanna add?
Uh, no, just, um, if there's anything, any other concerns with us, you know, let us know, you know, we just try to be, uh, as clean as possible if anyone had any issues with anything at all.
Any licenses that they need to? Everything they need, okay, great. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both, carry down. Okay, thank you, well, see you again.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you as well.
You're down. Okay, old business, gaga ball pit proposal. Luis?
How are you? Good.
Good.
Um, I'm from troop twenty, I came here after mission for building a gaga ball pit in town of St. James, Akamara Park.
Everybody has this. Wanna play a little bit, exactly what this is, Dale, so Luis?
Well, it's, um, it's a game that is played in an octagon shape with one ball, it's pretty fun. The point of the game is to hit the player below their knees with the ball, it's kinda like mini dodgeball. You mind? No, sir.
How many players? As many as you want?
Yeah, around like twenty or thirty players.
Twenty or thirty?
How, how big worth of speed?
Um, we're thinking about twenty feet, nine.
The drawing shows the.
Other side.
More than this? Yeah, yeah. Just passing around Luis, okay?
What is the age group of kids in this moment, like this?
Um.
Maybe we don't even allow toddlers in here, or is this specifically for elementary school, high school?
Elementary kids up to high school. You mean, it's all controlled?
What's that, three? Oh, okay. Is it safety concern if there's like toddlers and bigger kids in there, or not really, anything? What's that?
Not really.
Where, where is it you think you might wanna locate this?
Somewhere around the moral park.
Three?
South side of the horseshoe pit.
Yeah, okay.
South side of the horseshoe pit, hey, somebody is here. Do you think you'd have it done by midsummer, Luis?
Yeah, probably sooner.
How soon you wanna start on it?
Sometime today, yeah.
You have some folks helping you?
Yes, I have the children, my family helping me out.
Okay. Okay, so.
Second.
Okay, motion by Noni, second by Ray, is there any other questions? Any of the, uh, folks in the audience have any questions about, uh, Gaga? Yes, something new, it's been around, who has information, it's been around for how long, John?
I'm not really sure, but they brought it over from Israel, I think?
Yeah.
And they just built one, the boys built camp last summer, and it was packed constantly. So that's kinda where you got that idea.
Okay, any further discussion? Yeah.
Is there any other location, any of the other parts that, uh, you've thought about?
We reviewed, went to the park and rec board, and it was reviewed by staff as to where the place would be for it, and that's why it got selected here, there was other places that they were looking at, yeah. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both, okay, Luis, you're on the hook to get this built, thank you for taking it on, I may have to commend you, thank you, Luis.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
New business, uh, thirteen A, one-sided parking in a two hundred block of Fifth Street South, Scott.
Actually, uh, my wife was supposed to be here, but we got the lesser half. Um, we requested currently, uh, there's restricted parking on the west side of two hundred block of Fifth Street South, we're requesting that that move to the east side of the, west side become a permitted park. Uh, several reasons, one of which, the east side has actually have street driveways that come off of Fifth Street. We agree that perhaps you, we agree that we should limit the parking to this one side because of the traffic, which is also frequent in that, that section. Uh, the neighbors here too with the property that we own, and we have a covenant that we share the driveway, and with that covenant, we're not allowing either one of us to park in the driveway. So therefore that limits our parking, and we would like that to be able to park right in front of our houses. Second of all, traffic flow, actually when you come from downtown going there, it's easier to park heading south than to have to navigate the one way you come to, to actually park facing north. Um, actually, if you move with the, the parking, the permitted parking over to the west side also, there'll actually be a few more spots. Inquired about the neighbors, uh, the neighbor right to our north, there's an agreement that this, actually, I understand that she had approached the city council years ago, even just what we're requesting. Obviously, the, there's a, currently a house that's vacant across the street. But that way, that will compromise that, and then as time has gone through the old houses, um, the facility has diminished in the capacity of need for parking. I think, uh, we're just requesting that we move it from one side to the other to make it across, so the east side can easily park on the west side, you actually might fold better.
You okay with it?
Uh, yes, absolutely, one hundred percent, yeah.
Okay.
Um, the, the people on the opposite side of the street, every house has their own driveway.
Right.
So they all have off-street parking available, um, our two houses do not have off-street parking available, so it's really inconvenient for us, so.
Rick, make a difference here?
No, I don't, I don't care.
Okay, the streets where Dr. Mark, most of the person's office used to be.
At one time, it was no parking on the west side, but then these people solicited us, and we put no parking during school hours, so that the buses can go through.
Right.
That's where it is right now.
Yeah, the bus service should request that. Okay, so we'll switch to allow parking, I think with the council decides to switch parking to allow it on the west side of the street, and no parking on the east side.
There's restricted parking on the east side.
Yeah. But it was there now, yeah, so we'll switch the signs to the other side of the street. You okay with that? Motion by Noni, accept that? Second by Paul, is there any further discussion, anything you wanna add, Scott? Anything you wanna add? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both, carry down this way, we'll get it done as soon as we get the snow out of.
Yeah, once we get the, uh, snow melted, the frost out of there, and we'll move the signs.
Thanks, everybody, thank you.
It isn't gonna happen, so.
Okay, Tom. Lisa Graff and Dean, Art Place Update, how you doing? Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to give the council an update.
You're welcome.
The Art Place Grant, um, it's been, what each you have in your packet, it's a free page report, I obviously won't take the time to go through that in great detail, you can read the information that's in there, but first of all, I just wanted to say thank you to the community and the council for coming along on this journey with us, this has been, we really are an experiment, um, Art Place was really looking to work with organizations that had never engaged with artists before, whether that's groups like ourselves involved in housing, those in transportation, park and recreation, so we really didn't know coming into this, um, how this would turn out. Um, so it's really been an experiment with each of the communities to try new things and to see what works, and I think what's happening here in St. James has been extremely successful, and a lot of great things have come from the work, and so thank you for that. Um, also too, just to thank the staff, um, this all started with a meeting with Joe McCabe and really being an advocate for the community and cheerleader, and telling us how great it would be to work here in St. James, working with Sam and Jamie, have been wonderful to work with through this entire process. So just quickly with some of the projects that we've done, um, together, we'll go through it in great detail, um, what we did is kind of highlighting each of the projects in terms of the artists that we work with, the budget for each project, the timeline, and then some of the outcomes for it as well. And then also, we've included a section called the ripple effects, and I think the ripple effects are what are most interesting within this report, because these are the things we didn't at all intend to happen, they were not part of the project, they really have just come from the great ideas and people that were involved with each of the projects, and so those, especially with the healthy housing, you'll see there, I think there's like ten or eleven, something like that, there's ten different, um, ripple effects really that have come from that work. Um, so with the healthy housing, the main goal there was to work with the artists to do, um, healthy housing assessment work, we completed thirty-four of those, um, but as you can see, um, the ripple effects that came from that work, um, included everything from handyman workshops that have been extremely successful, we've had a lot of residents come and indicate interest in getting a handyman exemption, um, some residents indicated an interest in becoming contractors, and really wanting to learn more about starting a business and the process involved in that. Um, the city creating a fix-up fund, um, partnerships with Thriven to do window repairs throughout the communities, um, smoke alarm and fire safety workshops. Um, and just kind of too to end with saying that, that this healthy housing effort and everything that's happened is part of it, um, Art Place and a lot of national groups have really taken a lot of dollars in it, so it's been highlighted at many national conferences, as really kind of a great model for how artists can really kind of, um, engage the community and get people really excited, and lead to all sorts of different impacts within the community. Um, also on here is just some information on the downtown art projects, Sarah, I think has been working on the Garden of Good People mural, and also the bike economy, and as soon as weather permitting, we hope to see some progress being made there, we actually see the installation of the mural within the community, and that work happening. Um, I'll save the plaza for Jamie, I know that's next on the agenda, so just kind of highlight the, the happening for the, the plaza project there, and that, also Sarah, and then also a team of community members working on that. And just a few other highlights, and we worked with the Opera House to access the sixty thousand dollars for them, state grant, to be able to do some improvements to the project there, Luis has had this whole downtown revitalization theme. I'll be here soon, I think, on the Small Cities Grant, in terms of the housing and downtown rehab project there. Um, and then just do some potential projects and discussions around maybe the post-building and some other things within the community. And last but not least, um, one of the things we tried to do, we didn't, we didn't ask each of our artists to give definite this information, but as much as we could, we tried to pull kind of this economic impact information as well, um, all of our artists have been extremely, um, you're focused on ensuring that whenever possible, buy locally, and so ensuring that when they need a place to stay, they're using the local hotels, they're eating at local restaurants, buying products at the local hardware stores and grocery stores. And so just kind of including some information too on what we could gather in terms of that local impact, in terms of the amount of money that's been infused into some of the local businesses, by our artists buying products locally as well, so they've been very, again, very, um, focused on ensuring that they're, they're buying locally as much as possible in terms of those projects. So with that, if I don't go into a lot of great detail, because we've had all in front of you in, in terms of report, but any questions, or any you have, and more than we're ready to answer, we're kind of on the last, so in terms of the overall grant, um, we have about another six to nine months, and it will be, that'll be kind of the end of the grant, we've all some things that potentially will extend beyond that based on construction timelines and things like that. I'm current to the end of our.
On the Safe Routes School of Region I, has been very active in doing a lot of communities around, from, man, Kate, and I, we're somebody on this program all, all over, so if that gets to be established, I know that they have the ability to, to do that, as well as competitively to do it as well. Let's keep that in mind for this.
Anybody else have any questions, or Luis, though? Okay, so look forward to seeing you as we continue on.
Thanks.
Thanks for all your help and work. Jamie.
Alright, so in your packet is a preliminary drawing for the plaza site, from Sarah. Um, right now, she's working with Fulton, um, an official site plan that will, yeah, include dreams that aren't in here. So there was a community meeting on January ninth, and, uh, the memo that you got in your packet lists out all the things that were discussed. Um, not everything can be fit into the site, but she did her best, um, the creative concept around the whole thing is arrows of migration slash origin of ancestry in the world, so that's why she went with the compass theme. So onto the concrete will go footprints from community members, all migrating to the north of the site, the actual arrows of the compass are due north, due south, et cetera. Um, she was able to incorporate stages and, um, some rain gardens, things like that, there's also space for the bike economy storage shed, which will be nice for us. Um, so none of the seating is in there, but there will be benches, and there will be picnic tables, um, space in the center for shelter in the future if you so wish. And all the concrete walkways are five feet for EDA compliance, and if it is snowplowed, if we want to snowplow and plow it out for like a winter carnival or something. Um, so all of this is still in the works, and working a lot with Rainbow and TJ, helping, um, figure some things out for the future, thinking about that as we go through. Um, and the full team will come to present, um, more of a finalized site plan to you in the future, but if you have any questions now, Sam and I can try to answer them from what we've talked about with Sarah.
Some of the meetings with Ray and TJ, and basically, we've looked at getting the infrastructure underneath in, you know, sewer, water, because we need to have some kind of a bathroom there in the future, so we wanna make sure everything gets in there ahead of time, so we have to go back up and bore underneath to get in, but we don't have that, so some of the stuff will get in there ahead of time before it gets to that, say, that may not be put in right away, but at least the stuff underneath be put in so we can add it. Right now, we're deciding on, uh, where the bike o-.
Bike economy, yeah.
Where that, in that building, it should be a building and needs to be under lock and key, and we are thinking that that'd be a good place to put the restrooms as well, because then it'll fit under one roof, you don't have to have another building someplace else, and it'd be more cost-effective and more prudent to have it in the same place. Nothing to hold on, just an update, we're extra a lot of hours going through that, do you have anything you wanna add, Luis, over there? Any update?
No.
So more to come as our meetings progress, beneath, uh, new place north of the railroad track, past the Family Dollar, on the east side of the street, on the, uh, land that was generously, generously donated by Dick Towns and Down School Group for no charge to the city, so again, thanks to the Down School Group and Dick for, uh, giving generously to the community that is down from here.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, thirteen D, request to waive billing permit application for spec building.
Alright, so, um, for the spec building, um, we are requesting permission to waive the building permit fee from the city since it's an EDA project, um, and just pay the state surcharge of four twenty-five, uh, waiving that forty-eight hundred city building permit fee for the EDA.
And we have done that previously?
That's when I said precedent, though, Robert.
We have routinely done this for city construction for the apartments.
School.
School, yeah.
City, county?
Yep. So I think the precedence of these. I think the precedence already set up there.
Charge ourselves a fair, so it doesn't make a lot of sense, Paul, second, any further discussion? Anyone add?
No, thank you.
Well, thank you, okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both, carry down, thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
CBB Convention and Visitor Repair Report, Joe. Welcome back.
Thank you. And as Alex said, this is not a flashback, by the way. You have in your packet the information concerning the twenty seventeen annual report of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. We'd like to thank the Super Eight and the campground for their generous collection of the lodging tax, which is used to fund Convention and Visitors Bureau, last year it was over eight thousand dollars. We're hoping that it will be that high again this year. Of that eight thousand dollars, over six thousand dollars we spent on average promoting the city of St. James, Convention and Visitors Bureau, and the many unique things that we have in the community. Also, this past year, we used significant dollars making sure that we were informing the general public that Main Street Business District was open during the road construction. So, um, you have any questions concerning the report? And hopefully in the future, it will be a little bit more timely rather than three months into the year. Yeah, so it's not an indication that you should all leave town or someplace.
It just shows what's in the dollar for it. Anybody got any questions, Joe?
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, thirteen F. Resolution accepted financial gift from the VFW for a holiday flag decoration, the three hundred dollars from the VFW, or the St. James Holiday Flag, this is resolution form, excuse me. Right?
Second, this is third.
Don Helverson, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by show of hands, both, resolution passes four to zero unanimous, next is, uh, also resolution accepting financial gift from the St. James VFW force nineteen fourteen for five hundred dollars for purchasing fire department equipment, this is also in resolution form?
Some more discounts, third.
Noni?
Second.
Paul, any further discussion? None on the favor, signify by show of hands, both, resolution passes unanimous, sleep four zero, like to thank the VFW for their eight hundred dollar donation, with that in mind for our community. Generation plant battery replacement, TJ.
We got bids from Zeigler Cat and DTR, the engineering firm that we use on the electrical side for battery replacement out of the gen plant, um, they're original to the plants, it's two thousand and one. And we got two bids back, and I'm suggesting going with the high bid, because it's designed for twenty-year use again, from Zeigler was low, but theirs is only rated at ten years. So, over the lifespan, the high bidder is actually about, uh, seventeen hundred dollars a year less.
Was it the usual one?
Yeah.
Steve?
That's fine.
You've checked in higher bid? Anything else you would have to do? Okay, and you have this put in?
Yep.
Two thousand and eighteen, council wishes.
Come on.
Paul.
Second.
Any further discussion? Anyone add? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both, carry. unanimous, thanks, CBB, how long is that out to get it?
I don't know, it shouldn't be long.
Rick, approval of Eric Weyman, the space officer.
So we offered Eric Weyman, they gave him a conditional job offer, um, conditional on the fact that he has the vast background of psychological, of medical, physical, and approval of the council. We're near, we've completed through all that, um, I'm requesting permission from the council to hire him on approval of, down the conditions that he completes the, the physical and the psychological, I don't see any problems.
Step one, Rick?
Yeah, step one.
Someone? Second. Paul, any further discussion, anything you wanna add, Rick?
I'm just looking to get him here as soon as we can, um, as soon as he completes the stuff, he's got an appointment next week, and then I'd like him to give us two weeks and get him, get him here.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Carry. Sam, record, record.
Yes, this is in resolution form on the fee schedule that we passed in January, this is according to our schedule, we can pass our rates by resolution, and because of that, it will be effective May payable in July. Beginning May fifteenth, payable July, January, so.
Initially, already, the, the Sam said approved in January, but he did not food in resolution form, this is a formality for resolution.
Some more dispensary.
Paul, second, dispensary. Noni, any further discussion?
Are we going all three resolutions into one motion?
Move them separately. Anyone add, DJ? All in favor, signify by show of hands, both, this is four zero unanimous, next resolution, this is for wastewater, this also was passed in January, but it was a motion versus resolution, we're asking for the resolution for that.
Some more dispensary.
Noni?
Second.
Right, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by show of hands, both, resolution carries four zero unanimous, and the same thing for resolution form on the water rates.
I just wanna make a note, we did hand out a, an additional negative version of that resolution, just to. just to include this, the seventh article on conditions and provisions applicable to all customers, noting that upon shutting water off for fifteen days, it becomes incapable. And that's new, that wasn't in January. Correct. That's the only addition from what was sent out of council back in the previous resolution.
It would be a safety issue.
Correct. That fifteen days comes from a recommendation from, so. For water, for leading Minnesota cities?
Minnesota?
Leading. Some more. Point of the ring.
Thank you.
Second dispensary.
Non-Hilbertson, any further discussion? On favor, signify by show of hands, hold. Resolution passes four to zero unanimous. Done.
Yes, construction will start probably after two weeks of fifty-degree weather. We're probably looking as loud as allowed. First, second week of May, I know two minutes ago, I said it was going to start on April sixteenth, but it was yesterday. And obviously did not happen. I didn't say it was pending weather and that weather did happen. So, hopefully it will be another, sooner the better, so we can get things going on. I did pass out a map for you to see of the council. We are going to be issuing this map out to everyone who lives in the northeast quadrant of town north of Eleventh Avenue North, and Armstrong and East. So, Paul and Ray will be getting you up with these later this week.
Going to be a lot of, there'll be quite a few challenges because of the lack of parking from the north, from the four-way stop on Eleventh and East past the, on Eleventh Lake John Hoffman there. It's going to be pretty congested and difficult. We ask for everyone's patience, because it'll be trying to solve those little question.
Do you see a lot of additional parking, right, of all users behind the school because of this?
I do not. Not behind the school, we would not, we would not go there.
Everybody behind the high school will be able to get to their, their own, their own homes. So it's just, it'll be the ones on Eleventh Avenue, basically, and Armstrong north of Eleventh Avenue.
Yes, the people on Armstrong are going to be inconvenienced the most. And we'll do everything that we can, working with contractors to try to minimize that impact as much as we can, but there's not too much that we can do when the street's tore up.
I think you'll see more in Eighth Street, more block Eight Street, where we're concerned than going further east.
So we'll be building a road then, on this two here, between eighth and ninth?
Correct.
Okay, constructing a road and a railroads.
Yes, and one either the eighth or the ninth, one of the two will be open at all times. So they'll be able to cut over on that temporary road and come on down the other block. Do you think you're going to be okay to get that done, Ray?
We're going to work on, we're going to, we're going to have to get it done, so. We're going to, the biggest one, the biggest concern right now is getting that one at the school then. They're across the corner of Ninth and Eleventh.
Yep.
And then once it dries out enough that we can get in behind, between eighth and ninth, we'll get that put in right away. It will be a gravel road, that's just whatever is mapped, lived.
Lots of potholes and dust and that's just the way it is till December.
Yep.
Coffee hour today at eleven AM this morning, we tried something different. We do it Monday afternoon before the meeting on the second, for the month, we have senior dining. Let me see, some of the stuff that came up, the, the fireman's pancake breakfast that was postponed last Sunday will be this coming Sunday, April twenty-second, from nine to twelve-thirty, right?
Yep. Sure.
And where is it at?
Allegiant.
Allegiant, just like it was supposed to be just a Saturday afternoon. Brought up some information, the snow delayed construction, which was beginning now, it won't be till May. Sam already made reference to that. They asked about the state for a, the VFW that was canceled, postponed till this Saturday night as well. First Luther Nummy sale is also canceled for Saturday. Had a lot of information from.
They, they had it on Friday, they canceled Saturday, and they won't have it.
Won't have it again, correct. The church auction was postponed, that will be coming this Saturday at ten-thirty. Had a lot of information, it's probably fifteen, eighteen gallons of guys there. Citywide cleanup, we're going to have April twenty-eighth from seven AM to eleven AM. That's at the metal, metal lab temple site, and you, and we're not going around to the, up and down the streets. You have to bring it, bring the stuff out there, you need tags.
Yes, all we're, all we're asking for appliances that bring the junk over there, bring your, either a utility bill or just proof of residency, whether it's a utility bill or a driver's license or anything that shows that you live in town. As far as what we all take, we will take appliances, because Chris Hart of St. James Auto Sales will be there. He'll be taking scrap metal, he will be taking appliances without freon for no charge. If it has freon, such as an air conditioner, he will charge fifteen dollars for that. So, it's a pretty good cheap rate to get rid of those appliances as well. So he'll be there, and he'll be taking that stuff in addition. And more information that's posted, is that on our website, Jamie? Yeah, that's, that's on our website, we put it in the paper.
Public access? Public access, Linda? And again, you got to have, just to reiterate, you have to have utility bill or your license, so we know that your residency will not be able to get dumped.
And no residential garbage. This is a junk cleanup, not a garbage cleanup.
Anything else? Ellie, wake up. Mark? Jason? Ray?
Oh.
Rick? TJ? Linda moved. Oh, and excuse me, is that you and Linda or the coffee?
We had coffee today, because it was right before senior dining, I wasn't going to spoil their dinner. Okay, the movie this weekend is Ready Player One, it is a sci-fi adventure rated PG thirteen. I have two fifty-five live classes coming up, the Thursday, April nineteenth at six-thirty, and Friday, April twentieth at eight-thirty AM, and one PM. And then we have the Hating Baskets fundraiser Tuesday, and you guys can come to this or you can order. We're having cream and potato soup, creamy chicken sandwiches, and bars for dessert. It is on Tuesday, April twenty-fourth, it is from eleven AM to one PM. You can dine in here, you can take out, or we will deliver if you call the community building at three seven five forty-three seven. And it'll be in the claim dealer and the shopper this week. I'm on the radio. Think I got everything. Have a good one.
Again, thank you to Lisa for your court, Joe for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. There's no other minute that asks for motion to adjourn. Ray, Paul? On favor, right? Have a great night.